I call to order this special meeting of the Monument Board of Trustees Monday, January 11th, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Hogan, will you take role, please?
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Here.
Trustee Clark?
Here.
Trustee LeKind?
Here.
Trustee Romanello?
Here.
Trustee Stevens?
Here.
Trustee Unruh?
Here.
Okay, this is a special meeting to address Resolution Number 082021. Would the Board like to start with public comments?
Yes.
Okay. We will-
I was gonna say, how long, how much time are we gonna allow for that and are we gonna limit the times?
We will limit the times to three minutes as with regular public comment. Ms. Hogan, can you please prepare that? And... My suggestion is half hour max on public comments.
I agree.
Okay. Seeing board agreements or head nods, who would like to make public comment? Mr. Anderson, do we have anyone online who would like to make public comment? Okay, please let me know when she's ready to go. Ms. Green, when you are ready, you can unmute and speak.
Just connect your audio, please.
Mr. Anderson, is she still showing muted? Okay, do we have anybody else online? That might, that would like to comment? Let me know when one of them's connected. Mr. LeVere, would you like to speak now?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan LeVere, resident of Monument, and I'd like to voice my support for your efforts this evening. I would say that anybody who's using a false appeal to emotion and using false facts when they speak to you this evening, I would urge you to ignore those, those false appeals and continue on with your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeVere. Ms. Green, if you are ready, you can make your comments. That is Kim Green. Okay. Ms. Graham, would you like to make comment? Ms. Patricia Graham, would you like to make comment? On her end? Ms. Graham, if you are making comment, you are muted on your end. Okay. Let's move forward. We have public comment in person. Ma'am?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Graham.
I am so sorry. It wouldn't let me take the thing off of mute. Thank you for hearing me. I am so grateful for all of you and I appreciate all your efforts. I work in a small business up here in Monument, and I had a question about salons. Salons run under DORA, which are their governing agency. And how will this affect us? With us, you know, we have a dual, it's like we have dual governments that oversee us. So how does that affect us? And then also, my other question was, you said that you had distributed money to businesses, and I don't believe any of the salon saw any of that.
Okay, Ms. Graham, during public comment, we usually don't respond. I would ask that you reach out to town staff. You can find Mr. Foreman, our town manager, or Mr. Ritchie's email address on our website, and they can answer those questions for you. I see that town staff is making a note of your name so that they can contact you with those answers.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Weiser, if you'd like to come off mute, you can make public comment?
Yes, sir. I have one comment and a question directed to Commissioner Williams. And that question is, if the county and the county board of health disagree with CDPE, can the county overrule CDPE or does CDPE just come in and take over? And the comment is that I would like to suggest that the town can procure better PPE for its front office employees, either N95 masks or P100 reusable respirators that will protect them against inhaling virus. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry to say Commissioner Williams has left the meeting. You might have to contact her directly.
That could be a question you might wanna get answered at some point.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, you wanted to make comment. I'm sorry I ended up skipping you after that. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I have to lower it. I'm a little short. I didn't come prepared to speak tonight. I just came as, just to support this measure. So excuse me if I'm a little nervous. I've lived in this community since 1994. I grew up in Colorado Springs, lived there since the 60s. And I'm just, want to say I support this measure and what we are trying to do to support small businesses. I don't own a small business. I appreciate what you said about small businesses and the fact that we have people making decisions on behalf of small businesses who are not elected officials, and that leaves our hands tied, and that troubles me. But to the gentleman that spoke earlier online, I wanted to dress with some facts. And the source for this is El Paso Public Health and Colorado Public Health. And as of January 8th, and this is according to the total population, the total tested, the COVID cases reported, and the COVID deaths. So according to the percent of total population that tested above, and I'm happy to provide this information to the trustees, the COVID deaths out of the total population is 1.45. The percent of total population, I'm sorry, this is El Paso County, the percent of total population that did not die of COVID was 99.917%. The percent of total population tested that did not die of COVID was 99.857%. The percent of total population that tested positive that did not die of COVID was 98.550%. Within the state of Colorado, the percent of total population that did not die of COVID was 99.929%, and this is factual. Percent of total population tested that did not die of COVID was 99.912%. The percent of total population that tested positive that did not die of COVID is 98.836% in the state. And it is criminal that we are crippling an entire economy in our county and our state for these kind of statistics. And I will speak from a personal, a personal level. My mom died a week ago yesterday in Colorado Springs. She was 87 years old in a nursing home in Colorado Springs. I have been prohibited since March from being with my mother except outside of her window through a screen, where the window has been opened four inches, the door has, the window has been opened four inches for me to visit with my mom through a screen. My mom did not die of COVID. I'm sure that's what will be on her death certificate. My mom's vitals to the morning that she died, she tested COVID one month before she died. The morning that she died, her vitals were still normal heart rate, normal pulse ox, normal blood pressure, all of that. My mom died of isolation and loneliness because 99.9% of the people are not dying of this, but we have people are dying of suicide and loneliness and isolation. And I know this doesn't speak directly to our businesses, but what are we doing, people? We are crippling an economy because of these statistics, or in lieu of these statistics. So I'm sorry I didn't come to speak, but I just have to speak my heart. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We're sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Ms. Green, if you would like to take yourself off mute, you can speak. Ms. Green, if you are wanting to speak, it is showing you're still on mute. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to comment at this time?
Yes, am I, am I, can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. I apologize. I'm on my phone, so my, my speaker kept blipping out and it's not working very well. So my name is Kim Green, and I just wanted to share some, some real strong concerns that other people have right now, and I would like to speak to those. The gentleman who stated that he's very fearful of COVID, a lot of his family and that kind of thing are ill, and they would be highly accessible to COVID. I just really wanna, wanna speak to his, his words. I really understand what you're saying. But I do support this resolution 100%. My mother died in February, and my father had to go through his grief with her without any support from his family. He's been locked in his room since March of 2020. He still is not able to come out of his room, and he had to go completely through his grieving process absolutely alone. They were married for 68 years. My best friend, I just buried her from COVID a week and a half ago. And what, and I've had COVID myself, and I'm a high-risk person. Ultimately, it is my responsibility to, to isolate and to quarantine. It is nobody else's responsibility to turn their lives off and shut their livelihoods down because I might have a compromised immune system. My girlfriend, Marva, she was wonderful. She shared with me, we need to love each other, we need to be kind to each other, but we need to live life to the fullest because that is what Creator wants us to do. According to the UN, back in March, and nobody's talking about this. According to the UN, eight million people were projected to die from famine because the United States government shut down for six weeks. They were saying between six and eight weeks, over eight million people who were dependent on our economy to survive would die of famine if we shut down. They estimated that 24 million more people would die within three months if we did shut down. We have been shut down for 10 months. We are not thinking about the world population and how they rely on our economy for their lives. And I think that's a very, very important discussion to have. So if you look at those UN numbers, that's astronomical. That's actually more than COVID is going to kill. The other thing, too, is when you look at the numbers, the numbers are very skewed. Back in April or May, it was found out that the state of Colorado, the CDPE chair or committee, not committee person, but the head of the CDPE, Jill Ryan-Hunsaker, she had actually changed the numbers, and they were off by 27%. At that time, we were only testing for COVID death, and we weren't even testing people for COVID. And the numbers were very high. The numbers are off because we are only testing people for COVID, and we're looking at COVID death. We are not actually showing how many people are actually recovering for COVID. So you cannot take, we don't have the qualifier to actually prove what numbers are correct and what aren't. So I think that that's a very important thing to consider as well. Also, I do want the trustees to know that I appreciate you very much for passing this resolution. The Five Star Program is, was supposed to be just a program to help businesses open up, but what ended up happening is the state of Colorado came through. They took the Five Star Program. It will, it looks like it's going to be mandated, and it is going to be a permanent measure. So the thing that they said would be temporary will no longer be temporary under the Five Star Program. The next thing also is, and I think that this is something that the Board of Trustees and everyone in El Paso County needs to be aware of, yes.
We are on a time limit, so can you please finish your, finish up your comments?
Yeah, so the county, I do know that the county commissioners, they were just in a meeting this past week where the state of Colorado is trying to revoke the county commissioners from being a head of the, of the county health departments and put it under the authority of appointed boards. This would not allow people to have any say whatsoever, and I support this resolution because this puts the, the, the health of the people back in the hands, and it opens up businesses, and it saves lives worldwide. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson, do we have anybody else online? Okay, do we have anybody else in person that would like to make comment? Sir?
I should know that. I've been retired for a few years now, and I used to, I pastored a church here in Colorado Springs for 20 some odd years. So I'm saying that because it's easy for me to get up and wanna say something because I'm bound in my house all the time. But I'm Johnny come lately to the party here because I really have no idea what you guys have discussed in the past and where you're at. So I have a million questions, but I know this, I can tell this isn't the place to be asking questions. But sitting out here and looking at the size of the room and actually seeing Kim's name up there? I got an email today from a lady named Kim Green to me, out of nowhere. I don't know how I got it, why I got it. I do know why I got it because she wanted people to show up. And so I'm imagining some support or at least see what's going on here. And I like, I think, I don't know where everybody else is in this room. I don't even know where everybody is at here. I'm thinking it's unanimous, but I don't know that, that this resolution is unanimous amongst you. Looks like it's at least mostly unanimous, or if not all. I, I basically wanna say the same thing that the first person got up here to say to you. You gotta be encouraged. I imagine if, and I'm thankful that I'm not sitting in your seat because there might be a lot of heat coming your way over this, I could imagine. And to have support behind you and to know that there's people out here that, that are not in your shoes but are, would like to stand behind you, and I hope people do. I, I think I would, if I were sitting in your shoes, I was expecting an overflowing crowd here tonight, honestly. This is? Well, this, honestly, I was thinking that we would be going home because we couldn't get in here because there would be so much support for this. And I think that's probably surprised the most of you here, right? But then again, as I look back and having been involved in leadership and things like that, you guys are gonna take it on the nose by yourselves. It's a tough place to be in the shoes that you're in. And I think you probably already know that, but I just wanna encourage, I don't know, maybe that's not encouragement, but I respect you for being here, putting forth this initiative, knowing that there can be some real consequences that come out of it, not just for you, but your family, for the community or whatever. And I, I admire that in you. So please know, I think all of this in this room would, would be saying the same thing. We stand here with you and be encouraged as the heat comes. God will give you the strength to go through this thing. So be encouraged. I'm glad we could be here. I'm glad I could be here, and maybe we'll get to have some chats later to be a little bit more informed on my side, but that's all I wanna do. I wanna say thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Ma'am? Will you please turn on?
Oh, now it's brighter. Okay. Well, I didn't come prepared to speak either, and I'm not from here, but I came to learn because I wanna spread this around, and I'm surprised people haven't done this before. I wanna talk to the people who have called in or, and they're so afraid. I'm sorry. I refuse to live my life in fear. God knows the day of my death, and there's nothing I can do to change that. I can be careful. I can try and wash my hands all the time, but if I'm going to get the virus, I'm gonna get the virus. If I survive, I survive. If not, God knows the day I'm going to die. I honestly believe I had the virus, and I did survive. Never was tested. The deaths, there were more people that died from the regular flu before COVID came into play last year, like 2019, 2019, than from COVID. This is just a fear thing. I wanna encourage people to stop listening to the media because they're encouraging your fear. There's a lot of stuff online that will help you with the truth, and I would encourage you to go look for it. Face masks, or as I recently heard them called face diapers, hold a lot of germs and can cause you sick, to be sick. Someone said, if you can smoke through a mask, then the virus can get through a mask. If you look at the CDC website, the CDC website, the national, the national one, it says that a mask does not prevent the virus. Stop living your lives in fear. Live your life to the full, like someone else said.
Thank you.
Lynda Price.
Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Mr. Anderson, is there anyone else online? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna bring it back to the Board for further discussion on the resolution and discussion on anything else prior to the resolution. Do we have any comments or questions from the Board?
Yes, I'd like to make a few comments here. During the Great Depression, 1929, many people believed the crash of '29 caused the Great Depression. It was not. It was the government that tried to fix the Great Depression. What happened was they regulated prices, and they said a loaf of bread could only cost 25 cents. At that time, the bakers flipped out because they said a loaf of bread cost us 30 cents just to make it. And one by one, businesses started going under as they try, as the government began to regulate them. And the ones that survived were the big grocery stores because what they lost on the, on the bread margin, they made up on other margin. It was Ronald Reagan that said, "Government is not the solution to our problem. Government is the problem." And I think we're faced here with the pandemic. We're not denying that. We are not, as a Board, acting unconstitutionally. Instead, we believe it is the state of Colorado that is acting unconstitutionally. If you wanna download this resolution from our website, you can see the beginning pages cites case law, cites the US Constitution, cites the Colorado Constitution, that we do have a right to work, and we do have a right to meet. And as I said before, and, and there may be some new people that joined us, I just wanna reiterate the crux, the last two statements in the, in the resolution, the now there for section says that the Board of Trustees calls upon patrons to use their judgment when entering a store and feel free to walk away if they do not feel safe based on their underlying health conditions. It is imperative, we are not ignoring the pandemic. What we are doing is challenging every citizen to, to take responsibility upon themselves for their own action. If you know you're at high risk, then order your food online or do whatever you need to do online. If you are less of a risk, then you can be a little more free. But the point here is you must take responsibility. It was brought to my attention that if you are a fearful individual, you will be, you will be afraid to make some of the most critical decisions in your life. Now hopefully you have a loved one that will help you make those decisions, but because of your fear, you will abdicate that, those, many of those decisions. When a society becomes fearful, they are doomed to be taken over by tyranny. And it is my fear that that is where we're going because people are afraid of this pandemic. And like the lady said, when our time comes, our time comes. I'm not saying don't, don't act in a responsible manner, and quite the opposite. I am challenging each citizen of Monument to act in a responsible manner to protect their own health. But at the same time, we cannot let unconstitutional actions being taken by the government because we're living under fear. We cannot abdicate our responsibility to uphold the Constitution. And as citizens, we cannot surrender to fear. We must act with courage. The reason why we are called the land of the free and the home of the brave is because the American people and the founding fathers understood that it requires courage to maintain freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Other Board members that would like to comment? I will, I will follow that real quick with a side note. We, we understand that the, some of the, the town staff in their roles and the county are working on the Five Star Program for our community. The, the feedback we have heard from our businesses is, well, the feedback I've heard from several businesses is that the Five Star Program does not work for the smaller businesses. If you do not have the capacity to meet the requirements, it would, the program itself would reduce you to 25% or less even meeting the requirement. So the question I've gotten from some of the business owners is, why would I even pursue it? It doesn't do anything good. So I just, I know it was mentioned, and I wanted to put it out there that, yes, the county and our town staff are working on the Five Star Program. It doesn't require anybody at this time to join the Five Star Program. At this point, I think it's more beneficial, the current orange level, than the Five Star Program might be. So I just wanted to, you know, follow Ron's speech with that. If there are no other comments by the Board of Trustees, I will take a motion on Resolution 08-2021.
I move to approve Resolution Number 082021, a resolution reasserting the rights of the town of Monument and its residents and condemning the unconstitutional limitations imposed- of the town of Monument and its residents and condemning the unconstitutional limitations imposed upon their freedoms by the governor of Colorado.
Second.
We have a motion of multiple seconds. Ms. Hogan, will you please take roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee LaKind?
Yes.
Trustee Romanello?
Yes.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Unruh?
Yes.
Mayor Protime Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. That motion passes 7-0.
A special meeting does not allow for any other discussion beyond the specified topics. So at this point, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us.